Reconvene the meeting, and as Executive Director Quinton has just promised that we will done by six, go to work.
We'll talk fast. So I'm, oh, sorry.
Oh, God, I forgot. We have cupcakes for your birthday.
We know it's early, but...
And we've got enough for the entire audience.
I'm gonna say I'm glad the room is all set for this. It's a good thing.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
You guys can have your cupcake after.
Thank you. Save the chocolate one. Good afternoon, Chair Andrews, Commissioners, Executive Director Quinton. I'm Kimberly Brannan, Deputy Director of Portland Development Commission, and I'm joined by Fay Brown, our CFO. So we are here today to provide a brief update on the approved budget, not an action item. So since we last presented the budget to you on April 16th, we have submitted the proposed budget to the City Budget Office. City Council then reviewed that on May 15th and approved the budget with changes on May 28th. The approved budget has been submitted to the TSCC in advance of their hearing with you on June 25th, and staff will be recommending several more adjustments to the budget, which Fay will go over, that will be brought forward for your consideration when the approved budget comes before you on the 25th. So we want to speak through or speak about a couple of the substantive changes since you last saw the budget, both to the proposed and approved budget. The first is as a result of the actions that City Council took to move forward, the six changes to the urban renewal areas. There are two changes. So the first, the 30% reduction to the River District will result in a two or three million, about a $3 million fewer in tax, excuse me, about $3 million less in tax increment revenue coming to us. As a result of that, we have recommended an $850,000 reduction in the commercial property redevelopment lending item and moving that out for one year. We have a really robust line item there, so we don't anticipate that causing any challenges.
And I'll remind you that we will still get to the debt limit in the district. It just happens in a little bit longer period of time. So by moving this, that's the initial impact.
Yep. So with the, with us no longer collecting tax increment revenue from the Willamette Industrial Urban Renewal Area, we will remove a million dollars in planned revenue, but that will not have an impact in terms of our proposed uses because we continue to have $4 million in assets in that district, and so we will still have opportunity funds available for lending line items in that district. We also received $100,000 to support three new potential main streets through City Council, so that's in Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard, Old Town Chinatown, and Lentz Town Center. So that's reflected in our budget, as is an additional $160,000 in one-time requests that were basically funded, requested through City Council and will be passing through PDC.
So at the end of the day, we got all of the general fund that we asked for?
So as we mentioned, on April 16th, we are carrying over a number of items from fiscal year 1314 to 1415. So VMC and Headquarters Hotel, the Park and Streetscape projects that we referenced, as well as the loans to PNCA and Daimler. We're also moving forward about $12.6 million for housing set-aside carryover based on housing's expected expenditures. We had moved forward, or had moved $6 million from housing to redevelopment, but moved it back in the approved budget. So it's the $6 million in the Oregon Convention Center maintains an affordable housing line item, and what you'll see next is the full budget that incorporates a $20 million reallocation from, or to housing within interstate urban renewal area. So we consulted a number of longtime stakeholders in the urban renewal area, as well as our Neighborhood Budget Advisory Committee, to understand what the community priorities were in reallocating the resources to housing. And as a result of those conversations and staff recommendations, the changes to the budget and forecast are, as you see in front of you, we're recommending that we increase the long-term borrowing and long-term revenue by $5 million to increase resources to support some of the priorities in the district. We are reducing business lending by $6 million, but that gets us in line with what we've actually seen in terms of lending volume. So at $625,000 annually, we think that that is a significant enough budget. We are maintaining all of our major parks and transportation priorities, and all of those line items are still in the budget and forecast. We have reduced the scope of the Killingsworth Streetscape and Lombard investment, but we believe that that is, that will continue to support the priorities in those projects. And then one of the priorities that we had was basically to maintain the commercial property redevelopment line item to support our long-term property owner program. So that stays at $1.275 million, which if we were able to support the long-term property owners with that level of investments, I think we would be really pleased.
So not only did we, did staff work with the stakeholders who've been in the neighborhood quite some time, it was also reviewed by our Neighborhood Economic Oversight...
Yeah, Budget Advisory Committee.
...Budget Advisory Committee, and they actually came to City Council and testified in favor of it. So this was well-vetted.
So additional recommended changes that will be coming to you on, sorry, on June 25th, will be final changes to administrative materials and services budgets following a final review of our fiscal 1415 operating requirements. We'll make final updates to staff allocations because now we have a good sense of which projects are moving forward to 1415. Final adjustments to lending programs based on required project carryovers to 1415, and an increase in the Central City 2035 planning and the Central City Transportation Management Plan funding contribution of $325,000, which will come from the Central City urban renewal areas. Additionally, we'll be including the budget for the Enterprise Resource Planning ERP project costs based on the final contract costs negotiated with Tyler Technologies for costs to be incurred in 1415. And as you'll remember, we came to you and you authorized by Resolution 7040, the Executive Director, to execute agreements with Tyler Technologies for the ERP system for a sum not to exceed $1,320,000 over five years. So that includes the annual maintenance going forward, and based on the contract that we've negotiated, this amount is anticipated to be within the amount that you've authorized the Executive Director to enter into a contract for. Additionally, the total cost of the project will involve some staffing backfill, which we described to you when we came to you before, and that will include $118,000 for one limited term employee. We'll be using one of our own staff members to manage the project, and we will be adding $121,000 in the budget that will come to you for your approval on the 25th for additional staffing backfill. So the total contract amount, the budget adjustment for the 1314 revised number three budget will include $353,000 for the contract with Tyler, and the 1415 budget that you'll approve on that same day on the 25th will include $650,000. Those dollars will cover the implementation costs, the cost of purchasing the software, as well as the first two years of maintenance. And additionally, the adjustment for the $121,000 addition to staffing will be in the budget that comes to you on the 25th, and that covers the changes.
I would just say that both the presentations, all of the budget presentations at City Council went quite well again this year, as they always have. It wasn't clear to us that we were going to get the $100,000 that we'd asked for, and there was a little bit of surprise with wanting to put the $6 million back to housing at Oregon Convention Center, but there were some immediate opportunities that Commissioner Saltzman wanted to look at. So overall, it was a really good experience, and each one of the Commissioners, as they voted for the budget, had nice things to say about our relationship, and it was nice. They thanked me in particular, which was really nice. But Commissioner Fritz, in particular, who had made a long speech on the city budget, just said, "My staff gave me this, and I'm happy to read it to you. Go, team." Doesn't get much better than that. Any questions? It's not an action item, so it's just informational, you'll get a chance. And I think you know, and you probably will become more familiar with this, the budget, we're only setting the budget, you saw a five-year projection. We only set a budget for one year, and within the city-approved budget, we can change things on a line-item basis up to 10% without going back to the city. So there's quite a bit, there's more leeway than we need, put it that way. I would doubt you'd ever come very close to any of those things without letting City Council know exactly what's happening and where it's going in advance, but you do have that flexibility.
Yeah.
Okay? Perfect. Thank you. All right. So I think we're down to the last item, which we, last two items, but they're all tied together. First, we are going to convene an executive session. So the Portland Development Commission will now meet in executive session for the purpose of discussing the annual performance of the Executive Director. Executive Session is held pursuant to ORS 192.6602I. Only representatives of the news media and designated staff will be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision... Reconvene and return to open session here at the June 4, 2014 PDC Board of Commissioners meeting. The next item is Resolution 7058. It's an action item, setting the terms and conditions of employment for the Portland Development Commission Executive Director. Let me summarize what the proposal is, but first, in executive session, I did have the opportunity to review Patrick Quinton's performance appraisals, the current one, as well as the last couple of years, and have authorized me to make any final changes to that, so it will be filed for this year. But the action in front of you today would give Executive Director Quinton a salary increase of $11,000, bringing his current salary from $160,000 to $171,000. That was the recommendation of our Human Resources Department. They both looked at Patrick's pay with regard to his peers within the city and outside of the city, and in addition, took a look at what would have happened to his pay had Patrick gotten the same kind of percentage increases that our staff got through union contracts over the last three years. And so this number exactly meets those percentage increases. What's missing, actually, was a couple of years ago, we gave staff a 2.5%? I'm trying to remember. 2.5 or 3%?
Lump sum.
Lump sum increase, rather than a raise, so that it wasn't built into the salaries forever, and that is not a part of this package. It also provides that the current union contract has, if employee meets the, fully exceeds, you know, is it the, exceeds expectations, that there is a 2% bonus, and Patrick would become eligible for that as part of this. The two other things is, where I'm suggesting that, and this is my suggestion, it's not staff suggestion, I got staff's input to make these suggestions, that if Mr. Quinton's employment is terminated, he would get a severance package, which includes the current base, then-current base salary and medical and dental care benefit covers for a period of six months after the date of termination, unless his termination is due to malfeasance. And finally, an addition to the contract as well was that if Mr. Quinton's employment is terminated by either party, he would agree to work with the existing chair and PDC board and the new Executive Director with consulting or other advice for up to 40 hours. I think I covered it. Any questions, thoughts, suggestions? You know, I made this proposal because I think the job that Patrick has done over the last three years has truly been outstanding. You think about the, both of the internal difficulties dealing with the reduction in funding. When I started, we had TIF revenues in excess of a quarter of a billion dollars a year. I think the projection soon is like $65 million a year, if it wasn't this year, in addition to a very difficult economic reality in the real world. We went through two major reductions in force. We went through two contract negotiations with our labor union. We went through two reorganizations of staff to meet both the organizational needs as it shifted emphasis from housing to economic development and job development, but also with a new emphasis on neighborhoods and even more emphasis on the social equity piece of our business. In addition to getting that done, we created a great entrepreneur program with the seed fund and PDx Challenge. We've seen tremendous... We've seen tremendous success with our We Build Green Cities program on an international basis, and our strategic plan is showing real results. I don't think you can pick up a newspaper in Portland on a weekly basis without reading about some athletic and outdoor industry that's moving their headquarters here. We have the lowest office rate reportedly of vacancy rate in the United States at this point, and I can tell you I'm seeing huge blocks that's being gobbled up by the software and creative people. It's just been fantastic. And then at the same time, at a time where the economy was so difficult that it was very difficult, it was hard for any developer to make something happen, my company hasn't built anything since the Hilton Executive Tower, which was a decade ago. You couldn't get financing, and if you could, it was probably too risky to do something. But we've made major investments in streetcar, in light rail. We've been able to do parks like Field Parks, Dawson Park, the MLK Marker. We've been able to do projects like Killingsworth Station, O-COM, Moving Saturday Market, the Daimler Building, the Vestas Building, the Burnside Bridgehead Site. I should have patted Geraldine on the back more for the change in strategy to go from one developer in a big box, but just even a one-developer strategy to cut it into bite-sized pieces. Who would have thought this quickly that we would have activity on every single one of those sites? It's just absolutely amazing. And in the neighborhoods, the Canton and Lent streetscapes have made huge differences to those neighborhoods. And the neighborhood, the NIC Program, the six districts, which showed an amazing thought process. I mean, nobody, we had never done anything like this, to Sunset, simply in a short period of time, to provide some really good money to these neighborhoods to mimic our very successful, what is the street program?
Main Street.
Main Street program. It's really creative, really creative thinking. So I, if I could do more for Patrick, I would do more. But this is the package that you have in front of you today. Tom, questions?
You know, I don't have any questions. I'm still too new on this commission to, you know, I, in this, just in the spirit of what I've seen since I've been here and what I knew about PDC beforehand, it's, you know, I said, once you're here, it's a different world than, you know, what maybe the outside perspective is. And I think it's changing, too. I sense that, what the perception is. So I, you know, I just endorse what we're doing here.
Yeah, you made a comment to me the other day that I've got to bring up, and that was at, you've seen him in action at a couple of events.
Yeah.
And his communication skills are amazing, and his ability to deal with what can be a very difficult set of questions, circumstances, or environment is.
It would be really easy in some of those circumstances to get defensive, and that doesn't get you anywhere. Patrick didn't get defensive.
Commissioner Mullis?
Thanks, Chair Enders. Yeah, I'm obviously supportive of the package and appreciate, you know, a lot of the points that you brought up as far as what's happened over the last several years. And, you know, a lot of it wasn't easy, you know, very difficult financial times. You know, going through reductions in force is always horrible. You know, everybody you lay off here has a mortgage or a rent, and a family or loved ones that, you know, and that, that's very, very difficult stuff, and we did it, you know, to the best of our ability. And it wasn't easy, and it required leadership. Two of the projects that you missed on the list that you could almost hit with a rock, or maybe I could have when I was younger, had an arm, is the Bud Clark Commons. And then just almost right across the street, the one that's under construction right now, the 511 Building, which is going to be, that building has sat, what, at 10% occupancy for years and years and years. So that's going to be really great. And we made some of those decisions, like the Bud Clark's Commons, to push them out as quick as we could to put people back to work. You know, I mean, the construction trades were, you know, 35 to 60% unemployed for five years. So we made a conscious effort to get money out the door and put people to work, which I think is meaningful, probably saved some people's houses, literally. So pretty important stuff. And you don't, once you get something accomplished, you always think, well, that's done, and you don't think about it again. And so to review a little bit what we've accomplished feels pretty good. And obviously, there's still a lot of work to do, but I think we can be proud of what we've been doing, so. Oh, and one more thing that I think we've been very consistent on the last several years is our commitment to MBE/DBB contracting. We've extended that equity, not just to the construction workforce, but into the development teams and the architects and engineers, and I think that's a good thing. And also the apprenticeship focus on construction projects. And, you know, apprenticeship is the building trade's form of higher education. That's how we train our workforce. That's how you journey people out to have, you know, careers with family wages and benefits for their whole lives. So I think those are important commitments that we've strengthened over the last few years.
Okay. So I would look for a motion to approve Resolution 7058, setting the terms and conditions of employment for the Portland Development Commission Executive Director.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you very much. And with...
Can I have one?
Well, okay.
Quick response, just, first off, I just want to thank you for the kind words and for the vote of confidence. I've, it's been a great pleasure to serve in this job for the past three and a half years. In fact, it's, you know, I consider it to be an honor. I mean, obviously, you always want to take care of the financial side of things, but this is truly mission-driven work, and I get up every morning really excited to do this job for all the reasons you guys just talked about, but also just because I have a great team that does fantastic work. And I share your pride at what we've accomplished together over the past three and a half years. It has been a period of tremendous change, and, you know, we've still been able to get a lot of work done in the midst of all that change, and the change is probably permanent. So we're always going to be changing and still having to get work done, so it's now part of who we are. But I do truly appreciate the role of the Board and the leadership that you show, and I'm sorry that Commissioners Will Hoyt and Dixon aren't here, and even Commissioner Strauss. It's, when I talk about my job, I tell people what a great board I have. It's a board that takes a job seriously. They don't come with agendas, you know, with a few exceptions like today, the board doesn't, you know, it's not, it's not a, no one's vote trading, everyone's really voting on the issues, and the Board pushes us to tackle the issues that matter. So our commitment to things like MWSB flows from the Board. I always feel like I need to do more, more, because the standards that the Board has for us is so high. So I truly appreciate your support and your leadership, and, you know, you're all part of what we accomplish at PDC, so thank you.
Thank you. We're adjourned.
All right.
And you got it.